Item number one. We have got opening and welcome. Kita kubela guri. Let's all bow our heads and meditate ourselves with our own cultural prayers. Amen. I would like to welcome everyone present this morning. And kiloche our acting executive mayor. The MMC Sijbalongrona, our acting executive mayor, councilor Salamlela. All MMCs, chairpersons of committees. MM and his directors. All municipal officials and my colleagues, MPEC members. Good morning. Let me welcome you all. Feel free to participate. Let's engage our own municipal issues. For our own performance as Capricorn District. Let me also welcome Baobakabawalogona in the media. As we are live on Facebook. And by so doing, you are all welcome. Item number two. Introductions and acknowledgement. I'm Councilor Matata Maputi Elizabeth, the chairperson of MPEC, Capricorn District Municipality. Acting EM.
Thanks very much, Chairperson, and good morning to yourself and colleagues. My name is Malacha Slamle, MMC responsible for corporate services, standing in this morning for the executive mayor. Thanks very much.
Good morning, Chairperson, Ramakundu Anslape Municipal Manager, thank you.
Good morning, members, I'm the Chenis Kauli Executive Manager Infrastructure Services, thank you.
Morning, Chairperson, Councilor Matachi MMC responsible for SEMS.
Morning, Chairperson and members, my name is Fanimutibi, I'm the acting executive manager for SEMS.
Good morning, Chairperson and the members, I'm Dirobi Lusa, acting CFO.
Good morning, my name is Junius Machaba, Executive Manager Community Services.
Morning, Chairperson, I'm Councilor Ratlana MMC for Community Service, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Jack Ramacholo, the chief risk officer, thanks.
Good morning, Councilor Pedimatlala, MPEC member, thanks.
Ralocha, Councilor Mapote, MPEC.
Tovela, Councilor Masugwame, MPEC member.
Morning, Councilor Messi, MPEC member.
Tovela, Madoma Ramasora, MMC Yalavu.
Khodzo, Bazariwakaban Teilewarkena, Ellen Mashakwe, acting executive manager, DPEMS.
Good morning, my name is Mama Wolosiem, MMC for LED, thanks.
Tovela Putimalega, Office of the Executive Mayor.
Good morning, Chairperson, and greetings to the acting executive mayor, Malacha Slamlela, and the entire MMC members, and the members of MPEC, Nakmasaka Wpedi, Speaker of Capricorn District Municipality. I thought you'll check the concern of Ellen because she's not involved in her name, she just said my parents said I'm Ellen, thank you.
Alright, let me just share the same sentiment with the speaker, my colleagues, my name is Nabi Morifi, and we are responsible for corporate services as the executive manager, and then, I think all of you, thank you so much.
Chairperson supports us in culture.
Tovela, Councilor Sibulaisumasa, Mola Chairperson Infrastructure.
Ralavuwa, thank you very much. Let's go to. Item number three. And acknowledgement. I acknowledge all your presence. And then, let's go to item number three, which is apologies. We have got apology, the first apology of his worship. Mayor Memamidupi. We've got another apology MMC Finance, Mayor Ramokolu. We've gotten another apology for MMC Infrastructure Memorali. And MMC Makura. And then we have got another apology of Chairperson, Councilor Motavini. And then we have got another apology of Councilor Machaba for early departure. Are apologies accepted? Silence means consent or content of what I'm saying, meaning apologies are accepted. Let's go straight to questions and responses. Item number four. Muriyona, we have got item number 4.1. Kiona. Questions and responses on 2022, 2023 second quarter performance report and audit committee report. We shall start. With our first question. First question is under SEMS D15. The department. Set aside 250,000 on attending customer care complaints, compliance and queries received and resolved. A, how did the department manage to achieve the target without expenditure? Question number two, what was the money's budgeted for? Executive Mayor.
Thanks very much, Chairperson, our response is that on number A, the customer queries and complaints did not require money to resolve. The queries and complaints were received and resolved through the manual mechanisms that are currently provided for. And then on number B, the budget is for procurement of an online customer care management system. The tender has been re-advertised as the first attempt was not responsive, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any given time, as we move towards IR, our people can have access to raising queries and us responding promptly to those queries, thanks very much.
Thank you. Is it answered, MPEC members? Let's proceed to the next question. Which is. On the next page. Councilor Mapote.
Thank you very much, Chair. The committee observed that. The unit is always having high baseline and set low annual targets. Which at the end, the unit is exceeding the target and baseline. Our question, why did the department continue to under-target, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Mapote.
Chairperson, I'll request MMC Matachi to come in.
MMC Matachi.
Thanks very much, Chairperson, and good morning to the sitting EM. Members of the mayoral committee, the speaker, the whip of council in absentia. Members of MPEC, the executive management led by Entadis Lepe. Mahoshia Worena, members of the public. Baba Nalerenamo Kopanonyalhun. We are seeing that the targets are not low. But it's according to our plans based on the approved budget. The special focus operates in partnership with government departments, parititals and civil society, which assist in mobilizing and awareness campaigns in communities. We partner with these organizations in order to complement our budget and to also be able to impact more communities. Thanks very much.
Thank you, MMC Matachi. Is there anything from MPEC members? Any follow-up? Thank you very much, shall we proceed to the next question? Which is question number three, Councilor Mutato.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. The question reads thus. The department overspent their budget on the above-mentioned program, that is SEMSD27. The question is, how did the department overspend on their budget while the target was not applicable in quarter one and quarter two? Thank you very much.
Executive Mayor.
MMC Matachi. Thanks very much, acting executive mayor. The targets were brought forward from quarters three and four to quarter two. To assist metricleants closer to their metric exams. Through the spring school support, which is metric enrichment camps, which were coordinated in partnership with the Department of Education, the Capricorn District. The camps were held in Radanang Special School for Blueback Municipal Schools and PEX College for Polokwane Municipal Schools. And the targets are being revised through the reviewed SDBIP 2022-2023. This means there will be no targets for quarter three and quarter four, as the annual target is already achieved, thanks Chair.
Thank you, MMC Matachi, is there any follow-up question? MPEC members, Councilor Mutata.
Alright, thank you very much, Chairperson once again. You know, it's a very good thing to make a contribution, especially when we looking at. The final. Or the metricleants, especially of our districts. But I'm having a concern here, especially the camp that was held at PEX College. We know PEX College to be a boys choir, a boys high school. Because it was a camp, was it been accommodating also, you know, as we know. Most schools cater for boys and girls, where the learners that were catered there, maybe of the neighboring schools that attended there, were they boys only? Thank you very much.
MMC.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chairperson, and thanks for the question. As the district, when we provide these camps, we do not look at the issue of gender. We include every learner, be it male or female. And we are hundred percent sure that at PEX, there was demarcation specifically for that program of helping the metricleants. So we believe and assure that they were all accommodated, thanks very much.
Any follow-up question? Or any addition, Executive Mayor?
Thanks, Chairperson, just to add that, as you see, there are two camps in our district, in terms of Department of Education, there's a demarcation of two, it's Capricorn South and Capricorn North. Now, the camp at PEX catered for learners at Capricorn South, and the camp at Snobaronah catered for learners at Capricorn North. But the second that I just want to add is that, when these things are done, there is a serious collaboration in trying to improve the metric results. And there are targets of particular learners, so that in the district, we'll be able to improve the learner's performance. And that's why where we are, if you look at the outcome of the metric results, our districts in Capricorn North have improved, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, acting executive mayor. Only that in future, so that we don't assume. Thank you very much.
President, just one last thing.
Thank you.
To indicate that, if you look at the, there's two paragraphs there. The second paragraph indicates that as we do our revised SDBIP, we had actually thought that there's a need for us to move these things from quarter three and quarter two. But because we engage with all stakeholders like we're doing now, we got an advice from the audit committee that we should leave it as it is. But then indicate that it has already been achieved in the second quarter, but not revise the target on the SDBIP. I think it is important that we raise it with the committee now, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, that's why on paper, you correctly written. The way they being gone, much appreciated. We go to. Shall we go to the next question? Councilor Pedi.
Thanks, Chairperson, greetings to you, acting executive mayor, the speaker of council, executive management led by Councilor Mr. Ramakunduani, and my colleagues, MPEC members. Okay, mine is on SEMS D28. The department managed to over-achieve its quarterly targets, where 10 mayoral outreach programs were coordinated. Now question A, why did the department set for mayoral outreach programs for 2022-2023, while nine programs were coordinated in the previous financial year? Question B, how did the department manage to achieve 10 mayoral outreach programs without expenditure? Thanks, Chairperson.
EM.
MMC Matachi. Yeah, thanks. Yeah, we were saying that the target was set in line with the previous practices of one outreach per quarter. The additional programs in the previous year were an exception rather than a norm. The, if maybe I can give an example here, that we were having, for example, six council meetings per year. And during the year, we have special council meetings. So you can see that we have more council meetings than the ordinary council meetings that we have. The norm is six, and then we end up having maybe 12 to 11. So number B, we are saying that the approach to the outreaches was such that there was no need to procure any services. Here also, maybe if I can give an example, is that you'll recall that we had a program of handing over projects in Molemole, Lebelengumpi and Blueback. Members of the mayoral committee here were convening meetings under trees with the community, with no sound, with no tents and everything. So that is why we never had to procure anything, and I think members of the MPEC should applaud us and also congratulate us for saving money of the municipality, thanks very much.
MPEC members, how can we applaud? Peding and Councilor Mapote will be the last.
No, thanks, greetings to the acting EM and all members of the mayoral committee and the management led by the accounting office. Now, I wanted to follow up on B, government and services, to check that since we were under the tree, that he didn't even eat anything, he didn't have catering. If you can clarify me, because there's one that we know, I don't know whether it falls under this quarter. It was at, is it Blueback? Amakhad. Where, yeah, it was called Hamtinga or something. What was Hamdinger, three Hamdinger, EM, what was Hamdinger? And there was lunch there. Can you please clarify? Thanks.
Councilor Peddy.
Thanks once more, Chairperson. I think Councilor Mutula covered what I wanted to ask. And if I recall very well, that particular outreach was in a hall, so I'm surprised. MMC Babulela Kafasamtar, any regale.
Councilor Mutu.
Thank you very much. When citing the example MMC gave us example of special councils, so I want to check with MMC what is so exceptional about the additional programs that the, of the outreach? Because he did not tell us the exceptional of the outreach. He told us about the exceptional of the council. So we want to know the exceptional of this outreach. Thank you very much.
Councilor Mutu, Executive Mayor.
Thanks, Chairperson, and thanks, members of the municipal public accounts committee for raising questions. There's always a need to find innovative ways of reducing costs. The three-in-one, Hamdinger. What was supposed to happen was that there was supposed to be a district disaster reduction, what was program, which had a date. And was also supposed to go and hand over a project which had its own date. And there was also Batupili Day, which also had a date. Now, all that we did was that, all these things, let's bring them all together into one date and utilize one budget. So that we are not able to use more money on something that we can do. Because we are, already there was an identification of a venue, Amahad, for the district reduction day. Now, we then said, bring all these other activities into one activity so that the amount of money that we utilize is from one vote. That's why you'll see this one not having other votes. But the second thing is that when we use government halls, I think as part of the cost containment, we are supposed to utilize more public infrastructure so that we are not able to incur costs. I think what MMC, who are following Manjona Arena, as we respect them, when we say we want to bring this handing over of a project, where our people usually meet, that's where we went there. That's why we are saying that as part of us doing our work, we need to always ensure that where we can be able to save costs, we must do that. So that those costs can then, those budgeted amounts can then be utilized for other pressing council activities. Thanks very much.
Follow-up, Councilor Mutula. Oh. Subharab, Councilor Mutu. Repeat it so that they can do very well. Executive Mayor, before Councilor Mutula.
No, no, I think what the MMC is basically saying is that when we put four, we are basically looking at us saving one outreach per quarter, which will then take you to four outreach per annum. Now, as we have a program of doing more, of reaching more communities, that's why he used the word exceptional. But in actual fact, all that he's trying to indicate is that we are targeting four as we target one per quarter. But if we are able to do more, we'll always do more because what becomes more critical is that we need to interact more often with our communities. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Councilor Mutula.
Now, the EM, the activity at Amahad, what was the name of that activity? Let's start there. What was the name of that activity? The one that I'm saying it was called three Hamdinger. And when you check on that three Hamdinger, it's like they were going to hand over three projects or something. So can you explain what was the name of that activity? I couldn't tell you if recorded it in your, in your things. What was the name of it?
The three Hamdinger activities that were going to take place on that particular day. One was the district reduction, disaster reduction day. Two was the Batupili Day. Three was the handing over of a project. That's why he then said three Hamdinger. It's three activities. It's just the communication language that they used. But they were bringing three activities on the same day at the same vein. Thanks very much.
Ralivos, analysis from MPAC members. Regarding to the next question, honorable speaker. You little check a lady invitations. MPAC members, mayoral outreach, they were there. Mayoral outreach, little check a lady invitations. Now, MPAC guy, all over. Thank you very much. And I give a shala by that are very invited. Meaning the invitation is not the atime. Spending, we are not showing. Next question.
Thank you, Chairperson, and once more greetings to the Acting Executive Mayor and the Speaker, the AM and the management. Question five is on infra three. The question there is, the funds for the above project are already depleted before the end of the financial year. Question is that, what are plans in place to capacity the operations and maintenance unit, maintenance unit team to ensure that the municipality does not rely on services of term contractors?
EM?
Thanks, Chairperson. This will be done by filling of funded vacant positions before end of financial year. But this will based on affordability, council should provide more funding for over forty-five percent of unfunded vacant position in organigram as well as resources, vehicles and tools to be used by the employees. This, Chairperson, will allow the department to have more teams to work on shifts and reduce also on overtime. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Masua, our Executive Mayor. Let me also welcome. Is there any follow-up from MPAC members? Nothing, let's go to the next question. Let's go to the next question. Councilor Mutu.
Thanks very much, Chairperson, and greetings to everyone. Question six, infra twelve. The department managed to achieve the target without any expenditure incurred. Question A, why did the department set a budget of hundred and fifty thousand and no expenditure incurred during the midnight, mid-year? Thank you.
Thanks, Chairperson. The achievement was realized through implementing items that are done by the internal team. We are citing an example there that sampling of water from our waste water treatment works. But we are also saying that items done by service provider are still going on and expenditure will move after completion. This is only on more serious technical issues where we will need the service provider, which has been appointed. Thanks, Chairperson.
Thank you. Executive Mayor, any follow-up? Next question. Councilor Hamis.
Thanks, Chairperson, and greetings to the House. Question seven, infra fifteen. That department to meet the set target again on MIG expenditure. Question A, please provide the reports submitted to council and what improvements have been made since the previous public hearing? B, what are the challenges that stopped the municipality for implementing the appointment process after the moratorium have been uplifted? C, according to the expenditure trends for the first and second quarters, the municipality failed to meet the targets for two consecutive quarters. Will the municipality be able to spend hundred percent MIG grant at the end of the financial year? Thanks, Chair.
Executive Mayor.
Thanks, EM. We are saying that the report submitted to council is the one that MPAC is currently using, the second quarter organizational performance report. We are also saying that eleven contractors have been appointed between November and December twenty twenty-two as part of improvement. On number B, there are no challenges, but all processes should be followed to avoid audit finding. Overview of processes after moratorium has been lifted on the thirtieth of May twenty twenty-two are indicated as below. During June twenty twenty-two, engineers had to prepare final tender documents. July twenty twenty-two, bid specification committee did the amendment of documents and finalized August to September twenty twenty-two, tender advert for a product not less than thirty days. Adverts not done on same day to allow time for briefing and site visits as well as space for storage during closing time. September to October, evaluation and adjudication before expiry of ninety days. November twenty twenty-two, signing of appointment letters and briefing of contractors. Then contractors given fourteen days as per the general conditions of contract to arrange guarantee and other contractual documents. Then first project handovers done from the sixteenth of November twenty twenty-two. On number C, the municipality will be able to spend the hundred percent of MIG by the end of June twenty twenty-three, provided that the communities do not stop the projects. There are three projects where two contractors have been appointed to fast-track the implementation of service delivery. What we have done is that on these B projects, we split them into two and appointed two contractors so that we are in a project, so that we are able to fast-track the implementation. And those projects are the one for Khutpanse, Saramasukana, London, and the one for Mamoleka, and the last one for Khromuk Mahado, Difredetai Bos. Oh, the Khutpanse, Saramasukana, London, Mamoleka, Water Supply. And the other one is Khromuk Mahado, Difredetai Bos, Nustans, Water Supply. And the last one is Inveran, Water Supply. We have split these ones into two and we have appointed two contractors per project with their own specifications so that we fast-track service delivery implementation. Thanks, Chairperson.
Thank you, Executive Mayor. Any follow-up? MPAC members? Shall we go to the next question? Councilor Mutula.
Thanks, Chairperson. Question eight, infra seventeen, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty, thirty-six, forty. The municipality managed to achieve the above mentioned project, which is commendable. Question A, how did the municipality incur expenditure by only appointing the service provider whereas no expenditure incurred in infra five, nine and ten? Thanks.
EM?
Engineers said there are no designs required. Specifics and tender documents are developed internally, hence there is no cost. But when you move to the other projects, which are all capital projects and before contractors can be appointed, engineers should first complete designs and compile tender documents to be used during advertisement. When designs are completed, the tenders advertise, they claim fees for work done. Thanks, Chairperson.
Thank you. Any follow-up? Next question. Councilor Masuka.
Thanks, Chairperson, and greetings to everyone. Question nine, infra twenty. The municipality budgeted twenty million for developing developing ten technical report. Now, question, how will the municipality be able to develop the remaining six technical reports if fifteen point nine was spent to develop four technical reports? Thanks.
EM?
Thanks, Chairperson. Additional budget was requested during budget adjustment so that we are in a position to ensure that we finalize all the other remaining technical reports. Thanks.
Any follow-up? No follow-up. Next question, which is question number ten.
Thanks once again, Chairperson. Infra thirty-one, how did the municipality manage to achieve for three percent of construction of water supply project with less expenditure? And B, how will the municipality fund the fund the overachievement percentage since it was targeted forty percent construction of the water supply project? And things like that, once again.
Chairperson. Forty-three percent was achieved from expenditure of ten point two million from the allocated budget of seventeen point six, which is fifty-eight percent. Therefore, it is not less as indicated. But we are also saying that during the budget adjustment, budget adjustment was done to support projects that are moving at a higher pace. Thanks.
Thank you, EM. Any follow-up from MPAC members? Let's go to the next question, eleven.
Thank you, Chair. The municipality managed to overachieve on the target, which is commendable. How did the expenditure for the above project affect the infra fifty? Thank you very much.
The expenditure of the projects was low due to the encountered stoppages of the first contractor who's supposed to supply water to other facilities for testing and commissioning. And as such, it affected the overall expenditure, yeah, MIG, which is infra fifty. Thanks.
Any follow-up? It affect MIG? Or there is less spending?
Yeah, we need to indicate to MPAC that we have worked very hard. That's why we, that's why we even see us saying that we looked at projects that moved at a higher pace. And when we did our adjustment, we had to move. You'll recall that some of these projects were supposed to be twelve months ago. You're failing the next financial year. But there are projects that will be officially handing over. I think one of them is complete already. The other one is also approaching completion. The one in Nialan is complete, the one in Nareen is also approaching completion. Now, we have actually ensured that we move budget to those projects so that our expenditure now is high. We hope that we will not be surrendering any money to National Treasury.
If things can be in that order. We are suffering, we want money to take this municipality up. Next question. Next question. Question twelve. Okay, thank you. Under corporate services, CPSD five. The department managed to achieve the target to assess the vacancy and develop a draft advert.
The department managed to achieve the target to assess the vacancy and develop a draft advert with an expenditure amounting to twenty-five. Uh, the question, what was the department paying for since the target was to assess the vacancy and develop the draft advert?
Thanks, Chairperson. E M?
Thanks, Chairperson. The amount paid for lunch, for interviews, water provision, as well as payment for competency assessment and traveling expenses for candidates. Chairperson, if I can go on to indicate that the target for the quarter was to assess and develop the draft.
Hmm.
But you had senior manager positions where people vacated the positions. Then we had to then advertise those positions and finally interview those positions. And that's where you have this expenditure, because the overall target is coordination of recruitment and selection processes.
Hmm.
That's why you then have this expenditure.
The too much of it is, uh, the overall recruitment process. Any follow-up? Councilamutulla?
I re, I re, I re, I am by Kalusha, but I re, I re, I wish a target plus what they because he Kupale Kalashin Bozeli, we shall let you.
But please.
The target ve- uh, vis-à-vis this expenditure here, the the name of the, the, the senior managers and what.
Very impressive.
Thanks, thanks, Chairperson. I'm saying the target for the quarter was assessment of vacancy and development of a draft advert. Because we're basically looking at the vacancies of the positions that we have. But you had a situation where you had some resignations of senior managers, which were not part of, when we planned, they were not there. Now, you, you could not in any way wait for the third quarter, which is where you are going to have your advert and other things, because you must fill those vacancies within particular timelines. That's why you then have this expenditure whilst you did not have that target, which was supposed to have an expenditure within those quarters. Thanks.
No, M P E C members, it's, it's analysis. Regaya to the next question. Councilamutulla?
Uh, thank you, Chairperson. Yeah, thanks, Chairperson, and greetings once more. Um, on C P S D zero nine. Uh, since the beginning of the council, M P E C requested P P Es to show that the council committees had proper P P Es when conducting oversight on projects. Question is that, um, when will the council committees be provided with P P Es?
E M?
Thanks, Chairperson. Terms of reference are finalized and submitted to supply chain. Uh, since the policy has been approved, a service provider will be appointed. But Chairperson, can I just add on this one?
Yes.
We have, we have, we have, as such, search to management. They should follow this process in a two-pronged approach. Advertising for the three-year contract, which will then require us to follow the thirty-day period for advertisement, which will then kick in come the first of July. So that come the first of July, it should not be a time when we start saying that now we are advertising for a service provider already. The service provider should be there. Thanks very much, Chairperson.
Any follow-up? Ki na kanagorengeli? Li di wonchi che? Marasasalongo, nako gorenge? Aywa weli? Logospeda, pagonamo? Especially M P E C members when visiting projects. Hey. Moru nyagango, gati shaloto fasu. Yukwajaru, wana rokabara, ingeberu, wadi loris idie. Okay, level, his worship. Uh, next question? Question forty.
Thanks, Chairperson. Question fourteen, C P S D twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one. The department achieved the above mentioned project where briefing sessions were attended. Question A, why did the department only target sessions for the whole quarter? Question B, how long will the procurement process take for these items? Thanks.
E M?
Thanks very much, Chairperson. The target takes into consideration processes to be undertaken by S C M as this is a cross-cutting function. But the second thing that we're seeing that it will take maximum ninety days after advert.
Any follow-up? Next question? Councilamutulla?
Thanks, Chairperson. Question fifteen. F D ten. The municipality budgeted four million to revenue collections. What is the purpose of having the budget for this target? Why did the department continue to set low target on revenue collections? What strategies are in place to collect the remaining eighty percent of build services charged? Thanks, Chairperson.
E M?
Thanks, Chairperson. This budget is used to buy maintenance equipment to maintain conventional meters and to also attend to water leaks on the ground. But the second one is that this, we are doing this thing that is because it is based on what is currently being collected. And we are also raising the effect that we do not have a full functional revenue department, which we hope to, 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 to address when we issue out vacancy post now. Furthermore, C D M is in the process of implementing the smart meter program. Uh, we've already gone to Mohwadi and, uh, Old East and will be going to other areas to start the program, handing over contractors for this. The third one is that C D M is offering consumer incentives to service their outstanding billion to convert to smart meters. Thanks, Chairperson.
Any follow-up, M P E C members? Level, the next question? Councilamutulla?
Follow-up?
Oh, follow-up? Councilamutulla?
Thanks, Chairperson. Uh, on B, why did the department continue to set low target on revenue collections? And then you are saying that is the current, that is what is currently being collected. So I want to check, you don't have a plan or of trying to collect more because there's a lot of money that is out there. Uh, given an example, uh, E M. Government, department, businesses. Let's leave the issue of individuals. So when we say that is what is currently being collected, you are saying we what must happen to this government institutions and these businesses? We, 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 we don't, we don't bother to collect money from them. If you, we target low, uh, maybe assist me on that.
See, well, E M?
Thanks, thanks, Chair. We, we we are, we are, one, we're using, we've, we've, we're engaging these departments and these businesses, number one. We're, we're, we're sitting them separate from our consum-, our domestic consumers. And that's why we are even going to a level where we are even disconnecting, where they are not coming to the party. We are using the issue of, of the incentives for them to, to take advantage of the incentives so that we are able to, 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 to get more money. But the reason why we put this target was because whilst we are, because we are still starting to engage on this process, we'll be able to have a new baseline once we see that this thing is working. That's why we even say on the third one, we are saying that one of the things that we see as a program of going to assist us moving forward is moving these people out of the conventional meter system and put in meter, smart meters, because already there, you know, the people will only consume what they've paid for already, not billing them and following them up. That's why we are doing something in terms of ensuring that we do something and I hope and believe that as we set up, that we are setting, because now the system will now be working to actually ensure that we move out of where we are.
Uh, Speaker?
I will fall.
Sorry, sir, for calling me Speaker. And the Speaker is here to be like, you are contesting. I'm, I'm very sorry, I apologize. No, thanks. You know, uh, E M, the, we really appreciate the smart meters, but we don't want to have a situation whereby we are told that the council must go and write off after we've done implementing the smart meters. We want the money that is out there. Because when the smart meters start to roll, when the people start to buy and consume, uh, pay for what they are consuming and everything, we want that money. And I'm scared because you are saying we don't have a functional revenue department, or particularly on the government department and businesses. We can't have mercy on those two. Thanks, uh, E M.
Any, anything to? Uh, Councilamutulla?
Thank you very much. No, it's fine, I understand. Uh, i- in his ex- uh, uh, explanation, uh, the executive mayor, it seems as if, as the municipality, we are comfortable with, uh, what we are collecting as in, uh, as in now. Uh, i- 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 it doesn't, uh, get, it doesn't sit well with me that, uh, because we are currently collecting this much, therefore it's our baseline, then we will target this much. It doesn't sit well with me. It means we do not have strategy, we do not have a plan to increase, uh, our revenue. And then what I wanted to know is that, uh, this smart meter that we are installing is the, the municipality. Are they prepaid or are we still gonna read them? Because if we are going to read them, we are not going to collect, because the municipality is comfortable with what we are collecting as in now. So if they are prepaid, at least maybe we will get something. Uh, but, uh, lawana, the, unalomolawa, ore, motwazwanalaw, screams. I, I don't know, or, 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 if motwaza, regamezi, then are greames, maybe rega collect. But as in for now, uh, the executive management and then the political will, they are not willing, or, 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 or collect. They are fine, they are comfortable, and it doesn't sit well with me at all. Thank you very much.
Level, Councilamutulla?
Thanks, Chairperson. We are putting in prepaid smart meters. Two, we are implementing the revenue enhancement strategies approved by council. Three, we are not comfortable. That's why we are coming with all these measures. One of the measures that, uh, which, which will try to address also what, uh, Councilamutulla raised and both, uh, Councilamutulla, which the E M's task management was to say, let's also look at the possibility of selling our dead book. That's also, we, we have not taken a decision, but I'm just raising this thing because we are trying to look at all avenues that we can utilize to actually ensure that we get money from those that has and not, uh, come to a level where you are saying that we can come and say because we are approaching elections. No, no. We are taking this debt very serious. And in terms of, uh, the law, the law says that we must restrict, but we must also cut for, agree? As much as we are putting in smart meters, prepaid smart meters, people must still register if they are indigent, so that we are able to give them the six kiloliters of water. Once they finish the six kiloliters of water, it means they must pay. Now, it then for, again goes to say that those ones who can, they must pay and we must close. Then there are those things that are very clear in terms of how do you restrict and all those other things. Our namutwazunjumray kumanemagal, molaenurowa fodaudrang, obatel. But we'll follow this thing and follow the revenue enhancement strategy as approved by council, but also ensure that we utilize the debt management policy at council. That basically also broadened the incentives, that's why we talked about the incentives, so that we are able to get that money that is owed to the municipality. Thanks.
Level, E M. Way longer activity is, is followed up? Where the activity is, is followed up? Ki, ki se, tabengrese, beinfasi? If we put a better target there, then motwazwa follower, the activity has boring, gnali, so much target. But if the target is too low, meaning it's too low, I would don't want to clarify, uh, 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 further and further. If the target is too low, enkarajale motwore, achwaafe, agro tajetijimofas, abikirle tu. Ki, kobe rega hadu, amor, kikitimi she ten. Ki, se, vinyaberu, nyagosavoncha, but thanks for clarification. Uh, ki ba nabagao, tabashalamrago, ba tajeta vokaon, or, bakonukidima, baverega hat. Thank you very much. Next question, Councilamutulla?
Uh, thanks again, Chair. Uh, question sixteen, D eleven. The municipality is planning to install two thousand smart meters. Question A, beside the installation of smart meters, how and when the municipality will impact on collecting and recovering their outstanding debts? Question B, does the municipality have debt touch control policy in place? C, if yes, is this policy yielding any benefits to the municipality towards revenue collection? D, how will the smart meter assist the municipality in revenue in the long run? Thanks, Chair.
Q, E M?
Thanks, Chairperson. C D M is offering, like I indicated, the smart meters, but it's also dealing with issues of disconnecting business and government departments. Two, we are saying that the policy is there, yes, and it's also yielding results. And then number two, I'm saying that the smart meters will use, will assist us because consumers will only use the water that they buy. So there will no longer be water that is used but not paid for. Thanks, Chairperson.
Thank you very much. Any follow-up? Councilamutulla? To be. Councilamutulla? Okay, Councilamutulla?
Uh, Chairperson. Uh, I can see that, uh, on question A, the one part is not answered. They, they answered all the questions, but on A, they didn't answer the one part.
We're saying C D M is offering consumer incentives already now. That is happening. It's, it's already happening now, because we are implementing that strategy, where it said that we must offer incentives. Already now it's happening. Thanks, Chairperson.
Hmm, next question? Councilamutulla?
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you very much, Chair, once again, Chairperson. Depends ten and depends twenty. That's question seventy. The municipality incurred an expenditure amounting to hundred ninety-seven thousand and hun- and one hundred and thirty-seven rand. And thirty-nine thousand two hundred rand respectively while there were no targets for first quarter and second quarter. The question is, how did the municipality incur expenditure while targets were not applicable in both quarters? Thank you, Chairperson.
Hmm, Executive Mayor?
Chairperson, may I request M M C Maso to assist on this one?
M M C Maso? Bariwatuse?
Thank, thank you, Chairperson. Greetings to members of M P E C, the Speaker of Council, uh, colleagues and management. In terms of the response, we are saying expenditure was for the invoices, payment to the service providers appointed who delivered personal protective clothing and equipments for E P W P project during the second quarter. Uh, the second one, the expenditure on the report reflects the payment of the project implemented in the previous financial year, which balance was paid in the current financial year. Thank you, Chairperson.
M P E C members, any follow-up? Councilamutulla? Councilor Motula.
Thanks, Chair. The answer, A, it says during the second court, but there was no target here. If maybe I can be clarified, on the first and the second court. And then, but it says that the PPE were delivered, were procured or something during the second court. If maybe we can be clarified or again.
Councilor Mabot.
Eric, on DPMs twenty, payment there, it reflects expenditure year previous. Are we still following the supply chain processes now? Sure, we must pay the contractor within thirty days. Thank you very much.
MMC. MMC must.
Thank you very much for that. I think for DPMs ten, the explanation is very clear. It's ten as it is. For the thirty days payment, well, it's true. We normally, we are expected to pay invoices in line with the thirty days contract. But if something happens in, say for argument's sake, your financial year ends in in June, which is the previous financial year payment, you go into, you wait for the delivery and everything that reflects on your, you get as a result of the activities that happened. And automatically, the invoices will come at the time when you are expected to to receive goods. And we avoided a situation where we would say because it is the end of the financial year, let us close our books even though we did not actually receive the goods that which of course we were expected to receive. And as a result thereof, it will definitely just be like that. You wait for your goods to be delivered and continue with your payments within the budgeted finances that were for the previous financial year. Thank you.
Halleluah, MMC, any kilos wanalela yaka pili wenyunchawore? On paper, na serese balan, na koyone uwe. Kise taberesu boledi xa e liya? That other year, this other year, narwana no target but expenditure. Then kimo, rafonalowu elam rago, ra ra rifaeramara. Ngrilawonor dibat clarify it only when we, we meet. Renarleti and these are public what, what? Next question. Tell him.
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson, once again. The DPM seventeen, the department had two targets with the same project name but with different key performance indicators. Question A is that, how did the department have two key performance indicators with the same project number? The DPM seventeen page.
I request the MMC for DPMs to assist.
MMC.
Thank you once more, Chairperson. The key performance indicators are for two different projects. However, it is acknowledged that there was an error in the project numbering on the current IDP and SDBIP, which reflects DPM seventeen. The error was still corrected during the current revision of the SDBIP and the review of the IDP. Thank you.
Any follow up? Councilor Motula.
Let's, let's check the first one. Here, the first one, the baseline was four reports on implementation of twenty. Okay, okay, okay. Four reports on implementation of twenty-four TGDS. Now, let's go to the baseline of the second one in page triple one. The baseline, one IDP awareness coordinated. Can you repeat your answer again so that we get clarified? The base, the baseline of the two, they've got, they've got, I get what I'm saying, they've got the same project name. Again, DPM seventeen, DPM seventeen. Now, the baseline of the two are different. The first one in page one, one, zero, it speaks of four reports. And then the second one, the baseline speaks of one IDP awareness. Are you saying the second, this one, the second one is, is DPMs eighteen?
I've actually responded, but I'm trying to check again.
No, it's fine.
While still checking so that you get it very well, let me repeat, let me repeat the question. Councilor Motula will also be listening. How did the department have two different key performance indicators with the same project number, DPMs seventeen? So suwanagala, on paragraph?
Chairperson.
Page? Yes.
Chairperson, maybe should I, I should come in? I think we need to concede, we need to concede on this one, that there was a challenge in terms of the number. There was a challenge in terms of the numbering MMC. These are two different projects. And that's why we are saying that as we do our review, we'll be able to ensure that the numbering becomes correct. If you look at it, it's two different projects. The other one is more on the twenty-four TGDS. The other one is on the IDP. Now, that's why we are saying that it's, we are conceding, Chairperson, that there was an error in terms of the numbering. And as we do our review, we'll have to rectify this one. Thanks very much.
The one that is written on A, on your answer, the acknowledging it is an error. Okay. Any follow up, IMPAC members? Barabagnoli jury say an error. Hey, kixale, regileka di errors, man. Regileka tonama, tumun tumun kwara, di avoided, the misalignment, the, hey, the wrong figures. Di atoma, diskeja wele, jana media megani. Diskeja wele, jekaxa narwene regileka tonadis errors, whatever, whatever. Halleluah. Next question.
Thanks, Chairperson. Question nineteen is on revenue collection. What strategies are in place to address and eliminate the water losses? Question B, what action has been taken against the defaulting data to ensure that they are standing?
Defied, Chairperson, is that there are areas that have got illegal connections and they are getting water from Lepele Northern Water. And we're saying that there's a need for us to formalize the regulation in those areas so that we are able to then build them. And then we are also saying that in such areas, we need to also begin a process of engaging with these communities to introduce the flood rate in our own areas. There are those areas which are getting household, which have got household connections. And we're saying that there's a need for us to introduce flood rates in those areas. Thanks. Oh, the second one, now number B, already business and government departments were disconnecting. We are still raising that, but we will be able to address that as we move towards ensuring that we get new stuff. Thanks.
Any follow up, Councilor Motula?
Thanks, Chairperson. Now, the EM, I think you will agree with me that if you are saying installing the smart meters won't stop the water losses. Because I thought maybe in your, in your answer, you will speak about how are we going to address the aging infrastructure? Because part of the issues that why we have in water losses is because of the aging infrastructure, the pipes that are leaking. So the smart meter won't stop the pipe to leak. So the, and I don't see you guys speaking of how you are going to address the, the issue of aging of the infrastructure to stop the water losses. Now, on the illegal, where you are speaking about the illegal connections, are our bylaws efficient and operational? We need to check because if we are going to speak every day of illegal connections while we are saying we've got bylaws and they are not efficient, it's another issue. I heard you are saying that you are disconnecting businesses and department. I hope that is true. Because when we are going to want evidence, we must then see that this business was disconnected, this government department was disconnected. Thanks, Chairperson.
Thanks, Chairperson. The smart meter system will be able to assist us, Chairperson, because the system will be able to detect if there's any temporary. Again, what is happening now, what our people are doing before meter? Babula pipe, mezeleba incha before meter. Erara asatana kara, kara meter. What you bought, again, it's an aquara, the bulk meter, it's no longer equivalent to what gets out of the meters because they temper with it before it's an akara inkara meter. Now, the system makes it, the moment you temper with it, it then detects that you have tempered with the system, then we are able to respond immediately. But the second thing that we are putting on the check meters, where we are saying we need to put the check meters so that we are able to see where we have got this challenges. It goes back to what you are saying on the aging infrastructure. The check meters will assist us to be able to then detect areas where we need to go and replace the pipes cholumore di this needed because it will be able to say at this, within this radius. Agree? We don't have enough budget, we can say let's just do it all of it at the same time. But we need to be able to do something as we move forward.
Halleluah.
Now, EM, there is a pipe, there is a pipe that comes from Lepele Northern Water. And that pipe along the way, it gets some illegal connections. That is water loss, if you agree with me, right? Now, or maybe the pipe is leaking and there is, Lepele water is releasing water, let's say it's releasing ten kiloliters that to the CDA. And then what do you have in place to record that Lepele has released ten kiloliters and you, and you received the ten kilo, so that we know, or what is the problem? This water loss, because remember the water loss can happen from the pipe that comes from Lepele, Lepele Water, due to illegal connections and everything. And then you find that what do you have to make sure that what Lepele is giving us, you confirm that, yes, we received the ten kiloliter that Lepele has released and then there is no loss that happened along the way? From the pipe that, the main source that comes from Lepele Northern? Or maybe, I don't know whether I'm making sense or something. Okay, thanks.
No, no, thanks, Chairperson. Let me indicate that Lepele Northern Water is having a problem on their own. Because we have a bulk meter, again, where, when water comes to us, it starts there. The water that gets into that bulk meter is the one that comes to us. But they also have their own laws before by term of bulk meeting area. Which they have a project now to want to address that because people are taking from there. That water cannot be counted coreina because I saw tene kara inkara bulk meter area. Now, the challenge that we have that we intend addressing is once it gets into our bulk meter, then we have these other connections. Those are the things that we want to deal with. That's why we are saying, even in the process of this line that we have, after the bulk meter, we must also have this check meters so that we are able to say, okay, here are, I get say, ten kiloliters like we are saying. But we did not have anything, any village area connecting up to this check meter. If it begins to say nine point five, again, here are something is happening in between. That's what we want to do so that we are addressing. Yeah, that's what we tend to do. Thanks.
The, the, also now follow up? Okay, Councilor Lot.
What is that we are doing to address this particular problem that we have identified? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chairperson. Part of the advert that will be taken out now is to be at the level layer accountability will be the manager revenue so that that person is able to then focus on revenue enhancement. Thanks very much.
Let all these activities be done on day-to-day duties. Let's go to the next question.
Thanks, thanks, Chairperson. On this one, Chairperson, we will want to request the indulgence of the municipal public accounts committee. We we have identified that our figures don't talk to each other and we want to go and rework on this one. If the committees through your guidance, Chairperson, can, can bear with us on this one so that we can then report on this one in the next sitting. Thanks very much.
IMPAC members, we have got an request. I wanna next time, thank you very much. Okay, Councilor Lot.
If, when is that next time? Maybe during the third quarter organizational report or when is that next time?
Chairperson, we are, we are at the mercy of the municipal public accounts committee on this one. We, we can dictate, Chairperson. We have identified an error and will not want to lie to the municipal public accounts committee. We have identified an error. And that's why we then said we will not want to have any rush, rush on this thing because it's something that is critical. We need to respond to it correctly. Anytime that the committee might require us to come. But we need, just that's why we're seeing our, your indulgence on this one so that we go back and rework on this one. The municipal manager is here. We, we, from our side, will, will, will request, require them the reports sit in the office of the mayor by early next week so that we are able to satisfy ourselves on these things. Thanks very much, Chairperson. Thanks very much, Chairperson.
Um, she went MP members, but who fell over him, but by by Luke, she, Councillor Mutat, when is that, Marabon, she, when he recall, now, I said, hello, Ra, Ra, but Ra, Shalom, Ra, or, or, now, I, 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 I know. Are we noting, it's kind of, yeah, MP expect. Toby, Councillor Mutat.
Thank you, Chair. In another executive mayor, we like you, next week, it have a little office. So in our next meeting, uh, can I go now, ready, that report?
When is our next meeting? At seven? So since the now. Oh, okay. Around, yeah, I believe, I believe, meeting.
Have a meeting on the sixteenth.
Yeah, really, wow.
I think, I want MM to know this thing so that he can be able to finish the committee with the response. Thanks.
All right, wow. Let's go to the next question. Councillor Mutat. Kelly, no, but give us for me, where are we? Twenty one, Councillor Mutat.
Question twenty one on water losses. The municipality continues to lose water due to aging infrastructure and illegal connections. Question A, how is the municipality planning to eliminate the water losses? B, does the municipality have bylaws on illegal connections? Thank you very much.
EM.
Installation of check meters is needed to know the exact areas. Plan was to do it before end July, June twenty three, but due to budget shortage at OMM, this will be done in July twenty twenty three. Installation of formal articulation in areas with illegal connections, introduction of flood rate in rural areas, like I indicated earlier, or formalization of identified illegal connections by Le Pellet Northern Water is also ongoing on their part. But we also think that bylaws are then, they are due for review and will be reviewed as from July twenty twenty three.
Councillor Mutulla, follow up? Councillor Mutat noted.
Thanks, uh, uh, EM. But why July? Why is it not too far? Uh, why are you, are you reviewing them in July? Can you assist us why July? Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, mine is not a question. Uh, I I just wanted to alert the EM and the executive management that the reason why we are reiterating on, uh, these water losses is because it's a recurring finding. So if they can speed up, uh, or they can fast track or honor, risk, carry this finding, then as MP, we will be happy. Thank you very much.
Um, really, wow, Councillor Mutat. Uh, this recurring funding, EM, oh, Councillor Mutat, of course, I know. Then, Councillor Mutat.
All right, thank you very much, Chair. If you check um, the last bullet there on answer A, the formalization and I think of identified illegal connections by Le Pellet Northern Water is ongoing. So what is happening with, uh, maybe the pipeline after uh, the meter, the 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 bulk meter, uh, you know, the CDM now is their responsibility. Now, the rest, you know, to check the illegal connections on the pipe immediately after the the bulk meter from Le Pellet Northern Water. Is, I got Le Pellet Northern Water, I guess, check it li, li, the pipeline, yeah, 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 CDM. So what is happening to to the one that belongs to the CDM immediately after the bulk, uh, meter? Thank you very much.
Um, EM.
Thanks, Chair, Chairperson. Let let me acknowledge the input as much as Councillor Mutulla raised it as a question, but I want to take it as an input that we 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 will need MM to ensure that there are processes that might not require budget. We start with those process of reviewing now, those that will not require budget so that by the time we get into the financial year, we'll need budget, will be far advanced in terms of reviewing the bylaw. We are, we are acknowledging that input as I would do it came as a question. But the second one is that we are acknowledging, Chairperson, that this issue of water losses might ultimately cause us a qualification. That's why there's a need for us to do more on this one. Uh, we 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 are saying that we're installing these check meters so that we check and identify challenges. Where we'll be able to, I agree, we have got a budget for for maintenance, which we are also acknowledging that as we deal with this, uh, budget that we are dealing with now, there's a need for us to look at it differently. See, our budget for maintenance is always stagnant. Every year, a budget adjustment, we have to adjust maintenance. It means that we we need to change the baseline and see that we do something as we begin with this thing so that by the time we have put check meters and we identify challenges, we are able to promptly respond and ensure that we deal with those, uh, uh, pipes that might be giving us challenges of water losses. Thanks.
All right, wow, EM.